Last week. And so, this is our first of many to come work sessions to be in front of our council meeting. Yeah, we had a couple of topics tonight to go over, but we're just really gonna narrow it down to what our work sessions ought to look like, when should they be, and get some input. And so, I'm just gonna roll out some thoughts and then just turn it into a discussion with the council.
Mayor?
Yes.
It's being recorded and this will be posted on the internet later, so it's not livestream, but it will be posted later, so what you say is being recorded and put online.
So that'll be on K O Y C. And we also have news register in the room. Again, these are open meetings for the public to attend. What I've taken an opportunity is to look at the number of committees, commissions, and task forces that we have set up in the city. And we have nine committees that we have, at some point, asked them to report to the council. Most of those committees have a council person attached to them. Right now, the landmark, Historic Landmark Committee and the Landscape Review Committee do not have council people as associated with.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm on that.
You're on the historic?
Yeah.
Okay, we need to upgrade.
I've been attending him too often.
Yeah. I went back and looked, but you're not formally on the, so we'll get that squared away, Alan. Thank you.
I think there's a question if I'm on the committee or in the ad hoc city council red.
Okay, whatever. Okay, let's talk about that and we'll check. The, here is my thoughts and then I'm gonna have Jeff share some of his thoughts. The work session, in my mind, could be a great opportunity for us to hear presentations of our committees, our partners, and then a great opportunity, while we're still very fresh, to come in and top, handle a topic that, that needs to be handled in a timely manner. And so, the thought has been, is instead of going over the agenda, which has shown some benefit, but I think we can, I think we are, been in our positions long enough that I think we, we are pretty on top of the agendas, to take this and possibly utilize our time better and opening it to the public. And then secondarily, it will hopefully shorten our regular meetings where we would be having presentations. And so, this is, where we're sitting right now, because we've not done any changing, is that on the second and fourth Tuesday, we would have a work session between five and six o'clock. And we'd squeeze a meal in there some way. I think that's a little difficult sometimes if you're trying to carry on a conversation and trying to eat. But that's where we're sitting right now. And we have proposed and we have accepted for a period of time, the third Wednesday night of the month would be a work session from six to eight. And that's to help us initially address some of the issues of strategic planning as we're going down that path. So, Jeff, any thoughts on top of that? And then I'll open it up to the council. And I've, I've got another thought that I'll throw out in just a few moments, but let's just kinda open it up for discussion.
Sure, a couple things to add. I think there's, there are any number of issues kind of above and beyond those opportunities for committee reports or joint meetings that sometimes justify a work session setting for the council. And we've, we had a series, we've had a number of work sessions over the last ten or eleven months. And typically, what we would encourage from a staff perspective is that we would schedule those items that were either particularly complex, potentially controversial, have kind of a wide range of policy options where we might like to get some feedback before we bring something forward to the council for formal action. And some of those work sessions could lead an action by a number of months. For instance, as we pursue a buildable lands inventory and the possibility of an urban growth boundary expansion at some point in the future, I could envision a series of a half a dozen or more work sessions over a couple of year period as that work progresses so that you have time and opportunity to figure out what work is being done, ask questions, refocus the effort, whatever it is you need to do. And then, when you need to adopt a buildable lands inventory, then you're well prepared to do that at some point in the future. The idea for mid-month work session as a standalone meeting evolved out of the conversation that we had during my six-month performance evaluation, when there was a fairly consistent interest from the council in more opportunity for that focused work time. There are a number of topics or a series of topics that can easily take you more than an hour in a given evening. And so, rather than try to load up a council meeting night with an hour or two hours or two and a half hours of work session time and then expect you to have a one or two or three-hour meeting, it seemed like a heavy lift and unfair. So, that mid-month work session would be a time where we did their schedule items that we expected would take a long time, or maybe multiple items where you'd be together for an hour and a half or two hours and wouldn't have the pressure of a looming start time for another meeting. And with that said, we're happy to accommodate the council in whatever way you want in terms of how your meeting's run and what kind of topics come to you in a work session versus regular session.
Thank you, Jeff.
Just as a comment, five to six, I mean, how difficult is that gonna be for you, Adam? Or you sell, or, I don't know, I'm assuming it won't be difficult for Alan, but maybe I could be wrong.
No, I don't think five to six.
So, on the second and fourth Tuesday, we'll have, we'll have work session from five to six, and we'll have dinner session from six to seven, and then council from seven on.
Excuse me, where we're at right now is we're sitting six to seven, like we are tonight, and then seven to whenever council meeting's over. And, and so, a thought that I have, and I'll just throw this out, my thought is, you know, if people get off at five o'clock, giving forty minutes to get home with family, if we could do a work session from five forty to six forty, a full hour, and then we break, and that would be an open session, and then we go into a closed dinner from six forty to seven, giving us twenty minutes where we discuss, and it's just a much more, you know, building unity, and then we go right to seven o'clock. And, and again, as, my thought is, I think we can fine tune and, and our council meetings be shorter so you get home in a timely manner to be with family there as we try to do this. But, you know, I'm, I'm so open because being retired gives me some flexibility and...
Yeah, and I'm open for the same reason.
So...
That's why I think we need to talk to people with young families and be sure that, you know, they can at least manage some of this.
The five o'clock is never, unless I misspoke, was never the intent, is starting that early. Okay.
[laughing]
Unless that was on Kelly's agenda and I just...
Yeah, I wanted five. Four thirty is for either.
We would do this on the second and fourth, regularly scheduled.
Regularly scheduled.
It was, it was a five o'clock start time. I thought I heard you say just five flat when you spoke earlier.
Okay.
I think you said five to six, so that's why I wanted clarification.
Yeah, so the five forty to six forty and then the twenty minute, like, I think that's workable and I could make some adjustments to make that happen.
And I think it might clean our dialogue up a little bit, because we would never be eating during the work session.
Yeah.
Which allows us then to be very focused.
Okay, when you say closed session, and you use the word closed just as a twenty-minute or whatever period while we're eating, what do you mean by that?
Well, we're not going to bring any business up.
Okay.
So there's no need to make that an open meeting. Oh, go ahead.
Well, we're all here, I don't...
Yeah, I think if we're all here, then the opportunity is that there may be some discussion and that would, we would wanna make that a continuation of...
Okay, okay.
Of an open meeting. But I'm sorry, I stepped out for a minute, but I think your point, Mayor, is that we would not schedule an item for conversation. So, the idea would be to have, you know, forty-five minutes, an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes where you would discuss the work session topics that were scheduled. You'd take a dinner break if you wanted to have social time or there was some follow-up conversation, you can do that because it would be a public meeting, but we wouldn't actually schedule that to be working time for you.
I just wanted to clarify it because of the closed.
Yeah. Excuse me, the intent is not to do business during the time.
I, I figured that, but I just wanted to be clear.
Now, I will say, there's the possibility that we could use work session time for, say, an executive session for a particular topic. And so, it could be that a work session before a council meeting, which may or may not have action related to that work session. We could call an executive session during that work session time and we would notice that in advance, as we would have the executive session.
Actually, I think that'd be nice, then you wouldn't have the executive session after the regular meeting, usually, like we usually do.
Yeah.
And then have to go back in.
Especially if we are ready to go back out and make, take a vote. It makes it a pretty long...
There are certain, there are certain times where that executive session is preliminary to immediate action and that way you don't have that back and forth. You can do the executive session at thirty or six and then during the scheduled council meeting, you have action items appealing to it.
Well, thank you, Adam, for your input. Alan, any thoughts on your part?
Uh, no, other than just, I'd like to make sure that we do, we are productive, for sure.
Yeah.
That, that's on everybody's mind, that we're gonna come dedicated to that amount of time and we come ready to talk and get some stuff done.
Kelly?
I'm fine with it, yes.
Yeah. I'm fine with the timeframe, too.
Okay. Sal, I know this is your, your first...
Yeah, and obviously I have a strong need of the organization of meetings, but the start time's not...
I think it's very critical that we reach out to Wendy and out to Remy, that have, seems to have more needs to be with family during that time and getting them set for the evening. And I, I think if we go this direction, it's going to be, let's try it for a period of time and see if it works and how effective we think we are. I, I don't want to get into a position where we're just filling time.
No.
That's the last thing in the world that we want to be doing, is filling time for, filling time's sake. And again, I see the next eight, nine months being very critical time of, of a need for the council to be very engaged in the strategic planning portion, but also, it would be nice if we could do a little business earlier so we could get home. And my intent would be, we don't control the time, but my intent would be if we could be out of here by nine o'clock on council nights, would be really good.
Yes.
I, I...
It's even better.
Well, it would. But knowing some of our, some of our agendas, I think we take a look at like a nine o'clock and, and as we work with Jeff and we've worked with Melissa and trying to fill the activities of that night, if we keep that in mind, I think that's a good takeaway from putting, you know, a little extra time a little earlier.
Yeah, I, I like that a lot.
Any staff have any thoughts or comments?
So, my, my comment is that we would not set a work session, you have a specific topic or topics that were ready for your conversation or ready for your presentation. So, there might be a third Wednesday in August where we've got a critical mass of people who are on vacation, or there just isn't something that's so pressing that we need to have a meeting, we just wouldn't have the meeting. Likewise, if we end up only having one thirty-minute topic for a second or fourth Tuesday, we wouldn't call you in an hour and a half before seven. We'd structure the start time to be, say, at six o'clock and we have a thirty-minute work session and then still give you time for dinner right before the gathering. So, we'll, we'll make sure to schedule the start times consistent with whatever I am bringing forward to you and for meetings' sake.
You know, as I've kinda put my, my mind to this and, and did some math, and I'm looking at the commissions, the committees and the task force, we have nine of those. But we've, we've talked to the planning commission and we feel that maybe meeting them with every, you know, three times a year or at least twice a year might be appropriate. You know, McMenville Economic Development Partnership, we'd like Jody to come in, 'cause it's a fast-moving area, maybe twice a year. I added those up and that's twenty presentations that, and, and I mean, I'm going, one with the airport commission, one with the audit, which we do in, you know, when we do the audit report, budget, we all are a part of that, downtown safety, I said three times, but in reality, they're coming much more often than, than that. Historic Landmark and landscaping once a year, affordable housing, I say twice a year because that's something that's on everyone's mind, and MURAC twice a year, and then planning twice, and then...
But these would be much shorter sessions than what we normally see when we sit in a meeting.
Right, they would be presentations. They would, it would be, they're reporting out to us. And, and, and so, that's where I could see minimally, we've got about twenty opportunities to bring committees, commissions, and task force, but I also think that we should reach out and see if we could have a joint meeting with the school district. We've not done that. Water and Light, it's been a long time since we've met.
Definitely Water and Light.
You know, and the chamber comes, but do we have a work session with them? I think once a, once a year might be appropriate, 'cause they come to us and so, if we could carve out an hour and just see what they have for us, might be appropriate. So, I just come back and I say, you know, twenty opportunities, that, that takes a lot of our time out, but...
I just found all of them.
But I just, you know, my logic in kinda going through some of this stuff.
Well, you know, we, we could, we could carve some time out, you know, strategic planning isn't gonna be two big meetings a month, I don't think, but it might be. But if we had presentations by other, say, one, one time a month.
Yes, I, you wouldn't have to talk about strategic, you know, not three times a month and, and in July and August, you may not need to hear about it at all because that's gonna be a staff-intensive period of time. I think most of the engagement on strategic planning will be February, March, April, and then it'll sort of level down until the end of May. And then there really, other than maybe occasional update, which may be in writing or maybe electronic, we may not need to bring a lot back to you during the summer of strategic planning, but there'll be a fair amount of work to be done.
Yeah. I think the mayor said, you know, maybe Kelly, about the urban growth boundary expansion, that's gonna take some serious thought process and work sessions. So that's gonna be kinda like at the top this coming year, I would imagine, and the next couple of years.
Yeah, that's gonna be a series of long conversations.
But I don't know how we prioritize what's, what's worthy of a strategic planning session.
Well, we've already got four touchpoints with the council on the strategic plan and two on the economic development strategy. And all the, one of those will be in either a work session or a regular council meeting. The March second event will be a standalone strategic planning exercise with the council and the, and the leadership team for the project. All of the other connections will be, again, either during a work session, before a regular council meeting, or a standalone work session, or at a regular council meeting, if you have to make some decision, you need to adopt a strategic initiative or the overall strategic plan, it'll be an item on your regular agenda.
Any other comments? Mark, welcome. We see you often at Southern. Any, any thoughts for us, because since we kind of opened this up and you feel a little more inclined to be a part of that, we talked a little bit last week.
I mean, I, I'm interested in seeing which direction to go. I'm kind of, you know, I'm not certain what the best way to do it is. I think it sounds reasonable to me, so I'll, I'll just kinda, I've been, I've been thinking a lot about what Remy said about getting people involved. I may get up in public and comment in a moment, in a week or two, or at some, at some point can say something, but I'll think about it. Because I think getting the public involved is critical, and I think openly having these work sessions is probably a good way of doing it, but I don't think you're gonna get a lot of people to show up.
Right.
So, one of the things I can share with the group, it was part of the conversation I had with Dave about media logistics before the meeting, is there will be topics that we expect would generate a lot of public interest. There will also be topics where some sort of audiovisual component is really an important part, and for those meetings, we will try to anticipate them best we can and we'll advertise them for the council chambers. And so, if there's something that we think will generate a lot of interest and/or we do those screens, when we publish the agenda the week before, we'll say the work session happens in the council chambers. If there's something that's fairly tight and more of a discussion item and it's not something we think is gonna generate a keen amount of interest, maybe we just do it right here and we're all good. So, that'll be a little bit of a dance, we'll try and get it right as best we can. And if we, if we miss and think it's gonna be okay here and we show up and there's twenty people, then we'll just walk over there and do it over there. So, that's not a problem.
I have a question. Mind not nervous. A year ago, I was the mayor's grandson.
Question.
Sorry for that question. I do. So, a year ago, I was the mayor's grandson, and now I am a homeless person. How do we help the homeless people in this community to, if we were to try to better the community, to help people that are out there, if you look good and feel good, to get off their feet? How do we do that? When some people, they just can't get off their feet, if they don't look good about themselves, they don't feel good about themselves, how do you go about helping that? 'Cause that would be what it would take to make those people that are on a, that, that boundary there, to get that boundary, because it's really hard to get a job, when you're have to sleep on the bridge. You know, mind you, I had everything in the world, I had a house and everything, and I gave it away. I had the spiritual awakening, but it doesn't really matter, to get off. So, I just know, 'cause I've been put in that position, how do we help those people that actually want to do something with their lives, but they don't have that help? Is there a way to help those people? Because there's a lot of people out there, and I'm not talking about all of them, 'cause some people, they've chosen their path and they will go their way, but there's a lot of people out there, they get judged on the ones that make bad decisions. So, those ones that actually want to, is there a way to help those people that want to get up there and help the community? Is there a way to do that? And I'm not really sure what this whole meaning's about, but I got brought here, uh, to you. Is there a way to help those people?
The county offers a whole range of services and if, no, they seriously do.
I know they do, and I actually have a couple in that position, work desperately in the last year. But a lot of them are getting kicked out of the municipal area and getting flipped towards, like, Sheridan, Lehigh, or not. Is there a way for the community to actually help those people? Maybe that's all they need, is they, I hate to say it this way, but maybe all they need is a cigarette, maybe, maybe, maybe they need a beer, but maybe they just need a couch to sleep on for a night, or maybe they need a shower in the morning so they can go, because it's really hard to get a job. If you don't feel good about yourself, you don't feel good, you don't look good.
Well, shower services are available through a couple of places. Swimming pool will, will open up for people for, will allow certain, if you go and talk to them, they will allow shower services and so will the community center if they have available certain areas.
And they know this much, 'cause I'm from Sheridan. There's twenty-seven churches in Sheridan, Lehigh, and Run. I know that's not the capital, but in Sheridan, Lehigh, and Run, there's twenty-seven churches. It's really weird that not one of them is open for someone to come in in the morning and they clean up, they want to go find a job. It's really hard to go get a job if you don't have a place to go clean up in the morning. And I'm just saying, there's people out there that want to do that, but they don't have a spot if they can do that. Is there a way to make that available to them?
Well, if you're in Sheridan, you probably need to go to Sheridan City Council.
They don't have what you guys have right now, and you guys are the bigger town, you guys are the boss. People are gonna look up to you, they're gonna follow your lead. So, is there some place in this town right here that people could do that? Every morning, if they wanted to, they could go take a shower, to go find a job if they hate to, or, is there a place? Because I know that there is so many open empty houses compared to the homeless people. And I hate to do this religious thing, but, I mean, aren't we supposed to help one another? Aren't we supposed to help the widows and orphans? There's a lot of people out there, they're just looking for a little bit of help. Not my guess, not me. There's a lot of people out there that are just looking for a little bit. Isn't there actually a lot of people out there that could actually offer a shower or a couch to somebody that needed to get cleaned up, that wanted a job?
Is it okay if I, wait?
Go for it. There is actually the community center here in town, you can take showers, there's a charge, but you can also get that way, get what's like called a coin or something. I don't know enough about it to explain it more thoroughly than that, but a lot of folks in our community do go there to shower on a regular basis. I can't answer whether or not it's every single day, I know they're closed on Mondays, for instance, but that is one option. Another option is First Baptist, I know has showers available on Monday and Friday mornings. So, there are a few places in town that you can specifically shower, just to answer that very specific question.
That is great, and I am, I am not...
Yeah, I just wanna be able to give you that information, 'cause I happen to have it sitting right here, so...
And mind you, I am, like I said, I'm the mayor's grandson from Sheridan, so it doesn't really matter, but, I mean, I'm actually here, like I said, Monday and Friday, Thursday?
At First Baptist, they have showers available on Monday and Friday.
Wouldn't it be better if we had one Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
I mean, that would be awesome, but there's also the community center.
For that many churches in this community, wouldn't it be better if we actually had one that was open on, every Sunday, actually just open the doors, one of them a week?
Well, not all churches might have shower facilities, too, if you understand.
Isn't that what churches are for?
Well, that isn't really for us to answer. I mean, we don't represent the...
But aren't we a part of the city?
We are responsible for the churches, though, they have their own...
But aren't we part of the community, though? And if that what the whole thing is, like, the big community, like, a giant group, like, I mean, like they say in the Bible, and I'm not religious at all, but like, my father is our father, like, aren't we all from the one big giant group? Like, my father is our father, our father is our heaven, you know, all of us, but aren't we all a part of the same community?
So, just to expand on the showers, if you wanna shower Monday through Friday, you can go to the community center and you can...
Every day?
Yeah, and you can get that voucher, that coin that Natalie talked about.
So, you have to get a voucher?
If you want your fee waived, if you want your shower fee waived, there's a business...
Paying showers, every Saturday?
There's a business partnership in town called the Give a Little Foundation, where business owners donate annually to fund shower vouchers and a lot of other things that don't fit in certain parameters and boxes that benefit people that are down on their luck. So, if you've got a, a pass from Mac Water and Light one time on your power bill and this next time you're out of luck through their policies, give a little foundational step up and help with that. So, there's a lot of safety net programs out there.
So, my question is, again, once again, for all those people that are out there that are sleeping in the ditches, and it's not me, I have my own place, right, but what about those people that actually want to get back off their feet? They have to go get a voucher and pay for it, is that what you're saying? Or can't they just go find a place, shouldn't they go to the community center?
Oh, they go to the community center.
Help them get a voucher right there?
Yeah.
Right, they're, they're...
At the community center.
Yeah, it's not gonna, if, if you show up at the community center and say that you need a voucher, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure they're, it's, it's not a difficult process, they're gonna figure out how you do it, and you gotta have that.
I've never been there, I mean, personally myself, but...
Can I just say thank you for coming and raising this issue, not, because I think what you're talking about is broader than just shower vouchers.
It is, actually.
And, and the, the problem is, the issue that you're raising is bigger than what we're gonna be able to deal with in this meeting. So, we're struggling with trying to accommodate, first, the narrow question you're asking about showers, but also the broader question about how do we grapple with these really tough issues? And we can't solve it just in this one meeting, I wish we, this long term, I wish we could, but we're not gonna be able to. And, and so in order to complete the business of the council tonight, to get through that agenda, yeah, I'm just going to say thank you for raising the issue. And if we can continue with the other stuff, I promise you that we will do what we can. Uh, this is some...
Can I say one thing? Before they... Okay, I know this, Natalie, give me two minutes. A year ago, I was a bartender, actually, two years ago I was a bartender. Indian people had a vision and they drove by every day for, to buy it as a father. That's a long time, for six years to drive by and live in this guy to give him a hope. More than I ever thought I was going to be. But they found me after six years driving by. And they said, do you want a job? I became a carpenter, cliche, but I really did. And I actually made a butcher for the rest of my life. I went into the hospital, October twenty-eighth, and I was healed that day. I never had to have that surgery and I've been walking around for the last thirteen months. I am nothing, I'm just a vessel that gets used. This guy right here, he knows anything about for me. He's a good guy. But I just know some stuff, I can answer almost any question in the world, I cannot lie. It's really crazy, it likes you to wish, but I think, oh, I just know when to say stuff, but it's in the words. But I can actually answer all questions, and you're absolutely right, yeah, you did the right thing. There is a way to make this world a better place. And I think that this is what it's all about, is when people get together. And I just think that it is about bringing people that are flawed through a lot of, a lot of... That they were actually brought into the game, they would ask, ask, actually help a lot. And, uh, for being who I am, because I don't know how I'm going to handle that, if I get away, I didn't think that the other people that are right out there, they actually have a lot of answers.
Thank, thank, thank you for talking to us tonight. And we'll go ahead and move on, but thanks for your words. Okay, as, as we, as we put a conclusion to our comments around our work sessions, anything else that I, I will, I will reach out and talk to Wendy and Remy and then we'll see if we can come to some type of solidification on what we want to do. I'll get it out early enough to each of you so we'll know where we're going and then we'll work on, we'll work on those agendas so that you'll know in advance what we're going to be doing for that, that evening. Does that sound, does that sound appropriate? Okay. Any, any questions anyone has on the agenda for our main session this evening in that we have staff here, any questions that you might have?
I just want to get Sheridan to talk about giving us some contact.
We'll get you some information out of the main covering chambers there, Adam, thank you.
Hearing none. Alan?
Did they introduce themselves?
What's that?
I didn't catch their names.
Yeah.
This is Cyrus and Hannah.
Yeah. Do you have last names?
Cyrus, Paige, Bubal, and then Adam Allen. Paige, Bubal, like...
Adam.
Bubal.
Out?
Alk, A-J-U-C-K.
Out, okay.
Sheridan, our mayor's grandson.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we'll go, we'll, we'll close this work session, give us an opportunity to get prepared for our open session.